...everyone by name.
Yeah, I can speak my show at any moment. Iran, number one.
Yeah, you have a rest, give her what she's resting, you're resting down here.
Well, I gotta read today, buddy, he better be my bad guy.
Okay, let's all stand for the pledge.
Let's read this.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call, Mr. Lega?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing?
Here.
Mr. Chassick?
Here.
Dr. Koschko?
Here.
Uh, the Leonard brothers are absent. Mr. Matarazzo?
Here.
Mr. Namet?
Here.
Mr. Petrucci?
Here.
Mr. Stovall?
Here.
You'd have a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Lega.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion approved in minutes of May thirteenth, two thousand and nine?
Motion. Question.
My rich, second by Mr. Petrucci. This will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nope, motion carries. Information, Dr. Harris.
I appreciate it, thank you. Um, this is our last meeting for a year and we've got English and I always take some time just to kind of figure out where we are with our two-year non-negotiable goals. So, I just wanted to remind everybody of our goals, you can find a picture on the website. This past year, um, we've had higher level inquiry-based questioning skills, it involves English language programs being enhanced, it involves math science programs to be enhanced with best practice, and our soft skills development, which came out of our twenty-first century um, learning group that we was doing with our career goals with our bad development.
Better have to be you.
Welcome, Mr. Leonard. How are you doing?
Fashionably light.
Um, if I was starting with any of the goals, Scott has his component two, I want to address the soft skills. We worked very hard after integrating as best of our ability different soft skills. I think around information now for soft skills. The goals that we concentrated on this year, and if you look up soft skills, and I told you this before we started school year, there were so many different categories of soft skills for our career development, and I know that Mr. Matarazzo, Dr. Koschko, Timmy Issing sat on the board, we had with a guidance counselor. Did anyone else sit on those committees other than the three of them? One of the things we got from our businesses was people coming out of colleges and higher universities, but keep people coming out of high schools, they don't have enough of the soft skills. They said they could, they have a lot of the trainings, everything else they need to understand the job, but unfortunately, the education knowledge they have is being impacted by the ability that they can't actually have the soft skills. That was interfering with, and that was one of the things they wanted the school district to work on. Uh, we chose five last year to specifically address, and that was based on what we sent on a survey to all the principals and people on the committee and what they were lacking. And basically asked us to identify setting and accomplishment goals, interpersonal skill, organizational skill, time management, and possible evolution, which is one they wanted us to address. And you look on the very first page, it kind of lists those, and all the other pages kind of gives you a definition of what we were focusing on for those goals. Um, it kind of gives you like, um, what we were doing and where the umbrella and everything kind of meets about what we were focusing on. If you get towards, and there was a page that kind of just kind of catch, it kind of showed what we're doing. Grade level expectations, what were we doing at the elementary school, what were we doing in the middle school, what were we doing at the high school, we kind of addressed the um, issues to make sure we're actually conversing it. And I have to tell you, I had a great team from my guidance department, a lot of the principals and staff, there was a lot of extra initiative for it, it's kind of, this goal was kind of a fun goal to incorporate this past year. But under elementary, the goal was to complete one rubric per semester, and everything was found off of the chapter, and it would be included in the chapter three, three-nine folders. These are folders that the kids have to get in kindergarten, and they have to take with them to grade twelve, and this is basically their career pathways. Starts in kindergarten, you have to keep that folder every year, and of course, it changes based on attitude and everything else, you know, I'm sure mine should have changed by now. But um, uh, rubrics, and then at the elementary, we're not doing it for a grade assignment, but it would be scored, kind of because they're just exposed to everything they're learning. It could be helped to use this work in some new criteria that they report to us and report to you have. Middle school, that's actually when they start assigning a grade to the students' work, and there was a rubric per semester, and they're going to be filed in the career portfolios. In high school, this is actually when they're done for the English class, there's a taking of the English teacher, taking of initiative, working on it. If you look on two pages past that, it actually shows you this rubric and the expectation for each soft skill, what the students are expected to have at the end of the year, exposure to a bigger, what level of accountability we expect. Kind of gives you a overview in just a couple of minutes, but I don't want to give you the thirty minute, or just give you a minute for what we're doing. And next year, we're actually going to continue, but I have different ones, I have new soft skills that were actually in that's, um, ranking. Under questioning strategies, um, how, it's kind of funny, it's a little bit different because Scott has um, different activities, we're going to have the math and science, that I have a little bit different in our English or our questioning. We focused a lot, um, past year on TDA, text-dependent analysis. And I believe when we established both, Mike was here that night because I was talking about analysis, he basically said, I'll see if Christina says the same answer. Ninety percent of what he does is analyzed. Probably right with him on that. Everything you do, every document you get, and every, it's the critical reading, it's the comprehension, it's the written response to how you analyze. If he was looking at the best, if I wanted to give you the best definition for what TDA is, you can look at page five and six, kind of page with what we're doing. Text-dependent analysis is an English language or archaic literature rated item on the grades four to eight PSSAs. It is aligned to writing standards, which expects students in grades two to twelve to draw evidence from literacy or informational texts to support analysis, reflection, and research applying grade-level readings, standards for literature and literacy nonfiction. It means that the students must be able to demonstrate their reading standard through writing. And if you look on the next page, it kind of emphasizes, um, three components, but it also says require students to drive explicit and implicit evidence, and remember, hey, we kind of heard that word from our first twenty-five percenters who were listening to, implicit, um, from the text, and to draw inferences based on what the text says in board, board analysis. Of course, it's supposed to be constructed to be a well-written essay to communicate the interference and the connection to evidence drawn and conclusion. Basically involves three things. Are the students able to read and comprehend? Can they look at the, um, can they provide analysis of the liter- literary devices, in this case, all of elements? And in every prompt, there might be two different elements, character setting, it all changes. And can they take the analysis that they have formed and provide a written communication that you can read it and you can understand what they're trying to interpret? Basically, text-dependent analysis. It's no longer just a short answer question, it's no longer, um, what color was lady stressed in the story, it's no longer a basic factual question. You have to basically interpret and provide more evidence and a lot of writing, it was for it. What we've done with that is we've had a lot of different training, and we've had a lot of, there's some different examples of how we learned how to construct a prompt, I'm going to pass that around to you. And this past year, and the reason we have all the binders back is we created this for every fourth and fifth grade teacher in the district. This goes along with every reading story in the, um, in the elementary school. It is a whole collection of the TDA that would fit with each of the stories in the reading book. Now, the reason we have this now is what happens that, what happened during the year is I said, please, um, please make notes, please look at everything we did, because when we created it, we thought of the math. But as you actually go through the school year, you think, all these things improved, we can do a little better here. Make notes, make changes, and at the end of the year, we are going to change it. Some of them might not have fit through the story, some of them we actually decided, because I think we need a stronger unit, we might have to take the story out altogether and put a new story in with our reading series. So, there was a lot of that, and we really spent the year not only working with the TDA, but working with the reading series to make sure we do the best stories out to the kids and do the best prompts and elements. So, that was the whole year, and the reason why we have them back now, we're spending this summer, taking all those notes we did, and we're going to try to put them through and improve our binders. Because you just do it once and say it's done, it's never, it's not going to be the best product, we're going to make sure it's the best product and we're going to make some improvements. Our TDA scores did go up, so. That was when I said, we did have some benefit, you put all the work into something, you wondered, oh, and it's not only for a score of a test, it's honestly, when you see that the kids are analyzing and they're truly understanding, um, the elements and understanding what they're supposed to do, they're actually getting a new meaning from reading. It seems like they're actually taking it to the next level, that's what I really appreciate. It's so hard to make those connections, but they're actually looking at something different.
Okay.
Oh, actually, um, we worked with my teachers.
How many trees you killed? So, Dr. Harris, kind of work on this like from the middle back a little bit, now what level are you looking directly with?
Hey, once we get the board dogs, it's all going to be on your little, your little uh, Chromebook. We're going to prove it tonight, so hopefully by August.
We can't read very seriously, and that only, but that only addressed one of our goals, which is.
Is that the same?
Hey Brad, is that the same as my bed? Eh, it's more like a little computer. He'll be fine.
I'll work with it.
Pauline will give you personal training. The hell are you doing?
I don't think they're collecting them yet.
He was going to. He can't have gone to sleep.
One more thing, it's just basically what we did from two thousand nineteen to two thousand nineteen, and our focus, I know K one, we didn't have them paying for this year, we actually, we can kind of show you what we did when we get that, or the dash was about to show. But in second grade, we had different trainings, everything was different based on the TDA. And you have tonight, the twelfth grade, if you look down the charts, a lot of the training was related to TDA to SATs, you know, in, and they actually did a lot of different life curriculum strategies, different things throughout the year, ninth and twelfth, because their focus is all the difference, remember the TDA is really upgrading. And this year, one of the biggest things I enjoyed is I attended weekly TLC meetings, and it was nice because I used the binder, kind of like where we are with the stories and what they're doing, and just shared it, and it always gives like a frame of reference to start from, like how did this week go, how did this story go, what did we do? And it led us off perfect to conversation of the whole process of the TDA, of the reading, of the standard. It was just like a perfect year for the reading now.
Do you just call it TLC training?
TLC times, because our professional learning kit, we had those every morning for a half hour at different schools. I was more attentive actually in elementary than middle school, do more next year, I think. Dr. Togger, she is actually our trainer that we've used, and then if you can, we're gonna share with you some.
Independent of me?
She's independent, she's actually works, um, through, I'm not saying the state, she actually works through the Center of Assessment, I keep saying the state. She works through the Center of Assessment, and she actually has all the TDA.
She knows what is, what is the TDA.
Oh, it's, actually, because of our training and our work, we're going to be used to have that. She actually did some work with us, and I had an interview with her. I said that was. Not what it's for me, because I'm not, but it was great, so we are going to be involved in the college, excited because, I already said, I can get these kids to the middle school, that was what I think. They'll agree, they'll understand what this is. I, or they can be, when they write the show, they're understanding. At an elementary, if I have all my stress, the elementary class size, the SLOs and everything throw down there, I have a really good thing that's made here. We do it, and this is why we have the timeline here, Scott's going to share you later. Pretty impressive, and actually, he actually worked on it, he's part of it. Do you want to add anything on it?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just going to show you what we do with the principals, we call it the checklist, um, and the tablet up here, I'm just going to focus on, um, our own entry. So, if we look at, let's just focus on fourth grade, which has been all the way here. So, what we have here is a checklist that the principals do, all the things that they responsible for from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. So, example, first thing they're going to do in August, they're going to analyze their test scores. So, here's a fourth grade, uh, grade, uh, blah, everything that's, I'm sorry, yellow is, is math, blue is, uh, blue is English, and science is, so, you know, we're going to analyze the, the PSSA results that we got, uh, recently, so we'll look at those, see what we need to do with it, and come up with, every principal, um, all there. You have the blue areas, Matt, if you want to speak for the blue, there's a couple of things in there, that's the same old analysis. The star, the star reader is kind of Matt's thing, and Matt handles the ELA, I handle the, the math, but, but the star reader is, is an assessment piece for.
Yes, their assessment for reading is for the benchmarks, it's actually where they are reading at a point. It gives you a grade level, say if you're, probably they're reading at a, here, it might give you like a three, four, grade level.
There's also writing collections that they need to be doing, this purple area is kind of like an all-staff, so the principals are all supposed to have, they need to make sure that their teachers have their SLO, objectives done, so they have to create that plan and give it to the principals, and have it checked off, make sure everything's done right, differentiated plan for teachers who are different evaluation pieces, lesson plans that are done, make sure principals don't walk through, administrator checklist, to make sure that, um, all of the others are done, that's all in that, in that purple area. Get into the yellow, then we start getting into what we have with our pre-tests and common assessments, we have pre-tests we give to all of our math kids, our ELA kids, to see where they are and what, where their strengths are, what groups to put them in, or flexible grouping, high, high group, low group, medium group, that's where we use our SLAs to help, help with that, we put an SLA with the low group, the other teacher with the middle group, another teacher with the high group, to get, give us, give us a, some small group instruction that's going to actually focus it on what they really want. So, that's kind of a little bit of new review of how those SLAs are used, and what we're actually doing. Again, the walkthroughs again, pre-test, mid-year evaluation, so, you know, the teachers have to meet with the principal mid-year and go over their evaluation, where they are, their progress, and their goals, and where their, uh, SLO is, or student learning objectives, what's your data, which are the needs that, that, that they're establishing beginning of the year. So, that's done midpoint, uh, again, common assessments again in math, common assessment number two, differentiated plan also is done at this time, we're in, we're in February now, now we're starting to get heated up for these, uh, PSSAs, so you can see the red area, which is science, in fourth grade, we give a, a fourth grade PSSA for science, so they give a common assessment at that time, so we know exactly where these kids are, that, when we have a month or two before that assessment is given, so we know where our strengths and weaknesses are, so we can focus on them. Uh, we have another common assessment in math right here, we're analyzing the data of the, of the common assessments, walkthroughs again, it just kind of goes through the whole year of everything that needs to be done, and it's all planned out, and the principals, we monitor them, uh, every month, and make sure they're doing everything they need to do, and they sign off on it, and, you know, first questions, issues, we, we work with them, sometimes people can't get to things at a certain time, sometimes you have to do some work, most part, they do a good job of getting everything done. We do so much, it's just so hard for everybody to, to grasp everything that is done, this is a system that we have to make sure that it's all being done, monthly, annually, and so on. That's, like I said, that's just a snapshot of, of fourth grade, you know, we do the same thing with, with grades nine, twelve, we got one, we have one through middle school, we have one through day one, two, so every, every grade is monitored in that way. So, if that makes sense to you, and what's kind of nice is you, these are all links, I can put on these things, and there's to. That's on-hand schools, that's where we house all our data, that's where we analyze it, so the principal puts on that, and they log in, they can see all of their PSSA, uh, common assessment, uh, data for number two. So, they're on target, proficient, non-proficient, see what their weaknesses are, see where their strengths are, on-hand schools, which is this platform here, houses all that data where they're. That's kind of the big picture of kind of how we oversee everything, and that's where we kind of, uh, we focus on, and that's what we look at all year long, and it's a lot of work, we meet with principals all the time, we meet with our teachers, we have TLC meetings, like, uh, Dr. Harris was telling Bill, you know, we have thirty minutes in the morning when we talk about these things, go over these things, analyze data, and get to where we're at. We think it pays off, I gave you that sheet that has a, the bill of bars at the top, kind of give you preliminary numbers of where our test scores are right now, um, it's kind of unofficial, so I kind of made it generic, uh, just so you know, you know, the ELA is at top, you can see where we are in the elementary in grades three through five, and then you can see where we are in two thousand nineteen, we went up two point six percentage points on average in ELA, we were, we were doing pretty good last year, and you, uh, look at this year, we, we improved on that in grades three through five. ELA did take a little bit of a dip in grade six to eight this year, but that was the only blip in the entire, uh, PSSA results, we got back so far. We're at eight point eight, which is still very, very good, so we can't really be too upset about that. We've always, obviously, trucks driving to the battery. Go down to the math, you can see math in the elementary has gone from an eighty point nine to an eighty-three point eight, up almost three percent. Middle school math is up about six point three percent, I can tell you some of that is attributed to, if you recall, we added a double period in sixth grade math, okay? So, all of our sixth graders are going to be double period on math, so we're getting eighty minutes per day. That's really helped, we saw some, some significant growth in our sixth grade, um, so, overall, our math increased by about four point six percent. Then you can see our science, which is down below, uh, in fourth grade, we have a, an assessment, we also have one in eighth grade, and we went up in both of those, only about point two in fourth grade, and about. At our results, we see the rankings, all of it, and this is all preliminary, really don't know where we are and how we stand until we see everybody else. It's unofficial, because we still have some data that's out there, we haven't gotten back some of the makeup tests, and also the high school tests in Keystone, we won't get that back from them. So, we have.
Nice that actually came back sooner than normal.
Yeah.
And I should kind of just wait, and it's, I'm actually meeting with my middle school English teacher, I just weren't meeting tomorrow.
What's encouraging is the, uh, the high school data is, we, we know what it is, it's just not published yet, because it's a cohort, remember, once again, in ninth grade, it's starting, or actually, in eighth grade, they start taking these keystones, and then keep on going throughout high school, and they got to pass, and one in algebra, they got to pass one in literature, they got to pass one in biology, so once they pass it, they're proficient, but we've got to keep on working with kids who failed it, so by the time they're seniors and graduate, we have a percentage of how many kids in that class have passed. And right now, this junior class that we have right now, that's going to be seniors, it's very encouraging where they stand. Our ELA, it's about the same, but our math has gone up about two percent right now, and our science has gone up about, I think about five or six percent.
Science can be a hundred percent now?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four. And we might have some more, got to take the retest.
The science, yeah, the high school's.
So, it's at least ninety-four, plus, English was ninety-one.
Ninety-one, but I think we're going to get some more kids, I think we'll get a day off.
Add some more from the April, I don't know. Math is died ever since my last grade.
I think that's some progress, I mean, it's a lot of work, but eventually, things are falling into place.
We do a lot, we have a lot of management systems. Trying to find all those kids to make, to make a difference in their role. Do I appreciate?
One thing I'm passing out right now, like, going back to questioning, one of the things that we want to do is make sure that we're good questioning, and higher order questioning, and inquiry type of questioning, one of the biggest problems with, uh, PSSAs is, is the open-ended questions, and those are, those are in math, and those are in science, uh, and kids, when you, it's, it's, whenever we were in school, we always called them word problems, right? And you just usually looked at the problem, you looked at the numbers, and you either added them, multiplied them, that's what the kids try to do now, but it's so much more complicated, so much more involved, but, this is basically a little packet I, I gave you, just to show you kind of what we do in third grade, just as an example. So, when you see a, a word problem, and first thing the kids do, they don't want to read it, they don't understand it, they don't know what to do, they raise their hand, I don't understand this, I don't know what to do, so you kind of, kind of hold their hand, and get their confidence built up as the year goes on, so that they know how to attack this, where do I start, what do I do first? So, you know, first thing they need to do is what are the operations? And you look in addition, there's many ways of writing that in a word problem, right? Where you gather increase, how many total, how many in all, subtraction, taking away decrease, all those words, those are key words that you should pick up, same thing with multiplication and division, so that's what they're, they're taught, and they're, they're, and that's what you need to do. And if you look at the second page, it says, you know, what is the question, so what are they asking? Rewrite the question, what is it that they want to know, what? And sometimes there's two questions in, in one, and you don't really know what they're asking, you got to figure out what the question is asking, and is it a one-step process, is it a two-step process? And the key is, these kids always have to explain their work, show their work and explain it, and they don't really understand how to explain that work. So, sometimes they need a little bit of a, a crunch on that, you can say, well, I answered this because I figured it out by, or the solution was, I wrote this by, and. A little bit of a push, so they know how to start that sentence. So, those are just some strategies that we use to, to try and get these kids to work through those problems, takes a lot of practice, a lot of, uh, a lot of teacher, uh, I'm telling you, blood, sweat, and tears when it comes to that, they really get frustrated with it because the kids do, so try to do some things that make it a little bit easier on them. So, that's one example of some, uh, open-ended questioning. And we do the same thing with science, science has a similar process, but, you know, you don't, it's, obviously, the mathematics isn't there, but science, uh, there's a lot of graphs, charts, uh, and things that you have to analyze, interpret data, to come up with the right answer.
I was at the science, uh, for school, and the teachers are having them analyze. And connect, and of course, the teacher said, we're not doing TDA here, and I said, no, no, I was just trying to tell you that.
I have a question.
You got to analyze.
How does, does this differ from, um, how you did it in the past, as far as them having to explain why they did, because I, that's really helpful, because the other kids can hear it, they can hear it from their level, is that a different strategy than you've applied in the past?
In the past, the greatest result was to show your work.
Yeah, yeah, right, that's what, that's how I learned.
Whenever you write it, you really have to be able to explain it, the deep understanding is whenever I could sit there and talk to you, Bill, and say, well, the reason I got this answer is because I did this, this, and this, and that's how you articulate your, your thoughts and put them on paper, then you can realize, as a teacher, you know if they understand.
Right, I, have you used this before? Like, I mean, this particular thing, this method? I, I, like, six, I'm, you know, I'm just used to the old, uh, well.
What is TDA, is it placed before other questions? Explain what happened, tell them what happened.
Yeah. That's, that's a really good idea, I mean, can I come back to school?
It's interesting, I mean, the more I, when you go there, work on, you're doing it, and you're seeing the kids respond.
When the other kids buy in too, right?
Well, the other, the one thing, another thing we try to get away from, you know, math historically has been, you know, if you remember, if you can memorize some procedures, how to do step one, step two, step three, you kind of fumble your way through it, you know, it's a plug and chug kind of thing.
Right.
If you can memorize those procedures and steps, uh, you can get through it, but you may not understand what's happening, you may not understand the math, so, you know, we're trying to get kids. So, you know, we're trying to get kids to understand truly what the math is and what's behind it, and that's what this, some of this PAA core is all about, it's really deep understanding of the stuff. It, it's, it's not easy, it's very difficult for teachers to get frustrated with that. There, we use something called CanDulu, which is, you need to practice these types of questions routinely with...
What'd you call that?
It's called CanDulu, I know it's kind of...
No, no, it's not, no.
It's, it's a goofy name.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's one bit goofy.
It's called CanDulu.
My kids will always call it CannotDo.
Well, that would be new.
CannotDo, they always call it that, but I haven't, like, last year, I haven't even heard complain about it. No, no, that's easy enough.
We put our kids through this.
That's what you want.
It's a software, and you can, depends if you can do it online, but the kids are exposed to these types of questions, so they're able to respond to them, and if the answer is wrong, and they can have them independently, kind of like in that flexible grouping, so if the answer's wrong, it'll kick them to a resource where they are able to watch a video or address it in some other fashion, so they can do it on their own, and the teacher, there's only one teacher, you can't go all the way around the room, so there's a resource component too. And in addition, it helps them with those types of questions. Something else I want to share with you is something we call pre-act lessons. In math, we do, it's called a pre-act lesson, sometimes to introduce a concept, just for kindergarten, I'm going to use this example of counting and a set of numbers, so kids need to know how to count, obviously, in kindergarten. So the bubble gum machine, little kids all know about bubble gum machines, you put a quarter in it, you turn the dial, how many bubble gums come out? Five, ten, twenty, colors are there, whatever. So you just, you have a video, you put a quarter in, and the bubble gum comes out. Start asking questions, what do you know? What do you, what do you, first act one is, what, what do you notice, what do you wonder, estimate, higher low? Just talk about it, what do you know? What kinds of things do you observe? What are you seeing? And just to get their interest, stimulate that...
You can do things with the odds too, what's the odds of a red coming up?
All that, maybe not for kindergarten. And act two is you pose the question, how many of each color are coming out of that machine? How many blue bubble gums, how many red, how many orange, whatever it is? And now you start having that conversation, kids are talking to each other. But the key here is, you're really getting the kids engaged, you're engaged, and see what's happening on the video, and you're interacting with each other, interacting with the teacher, it's getting them really immersed into, as opposed to just doing a problem, you know, five times three, or six plus four, those kinds of things. And the answer, you know, actually, we had two reds, four greens, you know, but they made some predictions, I think you're going to get five bubble gums out of there, and how many are going to be red, and how many are going to be green?
Well, I just said that.
Huh?
I just said that.
This is an example, and that's a very, very basic level one, but that's kind of some of the things we're doing. That's some of the questions.
But we do a lot, and it just seems...
That's sixth grade, really many people.
I'm anxious to see if this... I didn't, when we first started, like, I was doing all that CannotDo, just if we gave up. We kept pushing and finding new strategies, and breaking it down more. I do appreciate your support, anything I can do, I think I've ever wanted, please do. I think I've got a lot of time, I can give them for my reward, and that's a commitment. The next, I was going to order this, and I don't, I feel like that's one gift that you've given me. Thank you for that.
Little questions, but I think we can go on and on.
Oh, I promise. It's thirty-eight, so.
Thank you so much.
Back to you, Dr. Conchak.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. At this time, we have no reputation visitors on the roof.
Treasury report, may I have a motion to approve the Treasury report and the High School Act Circuit grant report?
To move.
Mr. Petrusy, second by...
Question.
Question being called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Give it to Bill, the motion approved became the bill since the month of June 2019.
Second, question.
Second by Mr. Petrusy. Being called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All say no, motion carries. Buildings and grounds of safety.
I'd like to move a grant, grant to the township of Penn, permanent storm sewer easel on Harrison Park Elementary School property, facilitate work on the Maryville Storm replacement project.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy.
Question.
Question being called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Manoraz. May at five o'clock, we did have an executive session, where we discussed personnel, attorney advisory regarding the test evaluation, confidential privilege matters, forward also amendment of regulation on testing for the entire business. Business, athletics next, Mr. Manoraz.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve the following volunteer coaches, effective immediately. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. Russ Ratten, volunteer football coach, district wide, effective immediately. Larry Becky, volunteer baseball coach, district wide, effective for the 2018-2019 season.
Second.
Second, Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Also like to move to accept the following resignations. Thomas Chris, junior high baseball coach, district wide, effective May 10. Summer Green, assistant track coach at Trafford Middle School, effective May 13. Bethany Smythe, assistant girls soccer coach, district wide, effective May 7. And Larry Becky, junior high assistant baseball coach, district wide, effective for the 2018-2019 season.
Second. Second by Mrs. Zizing.
Question.
Question being called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all we have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Manoraz. Budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik.
Thank you, Mr. President, before I read motion number one, the amount, the amount that I'm going to read for the millage increase already includes the approved two point two mills that we approved in May, just so you guys know that. Move to recommend that the 2019-20 school district budget and schedule is in the amount of fifty-seven million, eight hundred thirty thousand, four hundred twenty-two dollars, properly advertised, in accordance with the school laws of Pennsylvania, be adopted and filed in the official board minutes to include the following taxes as shown in the budget. Real estate at a rate of eighty-five point seven five, mills, eight point five seven five, on each one hundred dollars, assessed valuation of taxable property, the real estate tax rate for Algeni Colony Portion located in Trafford Borough is fifteen point three nine mills, per capita tax as listed, Act 511 taxes as listed, and the 2019-20 budget breakdown as listed.
You have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusy. Question being called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
I do have a question before we make the vote, Mr. President. I would like to entertain a reduction in the millage and ask for a change to one point eight zero mills instead of two. Will we get us...
You can get the vote on the second question.
Yeah, you do.
Second on the two point...
Okay, I apologize, go ahead, Mike.
So you had a second on the two point oh, the millage increase, question was called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion for a two-mill increase, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Carry the weight, that's fine.
Okay, I like to, since I've always been asking bank millage for the past least dozen years, and our index is allowed to go to two point five mills.
I think we had to do this before, it's already been approved.
Two point oh mill already approved.
Okay, so, okay, I'll be able to say after him, my apologies, Nick, go ahead.
Okay.
Am I wrong?
He passed the budget at two mill.
I thought you should do that during the question part.
Yeah, I've done this before, there's been a problem.
It's a separate motion to have...
There's a second on the initial one.
That's what I'm going to ask, then, how are you going to get that one point? I'm confused.
And then you could have someone make a motion to amend, the individual who seconded the first initial motion would have to agree.
Down to one point eight, or whatever, whatever Phil said.
All right, so now we're at a point where...
Thank you for your answer, I appreciate that.
You approved the two.
So if somebody wants to make another motion, they can.
Where are we going from where to where?
They're going to make a motion first.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm asking you.
No, I, I want...
They're going to make a motion to amend it to another number.
Yeah, our index is two and a half mills, I'd like to add additional half a mill, which I've been trying to do for quite a while now, and to be banked for capital improvements because of our many aging buildings, to start setting money aside. I've done this in the past, I'm not going to go through the ageary building and do all that, I think we've discussed that many, many times. So I'd like to make a motion, we go to the index of adding additional half a mill, be strictly for capital improvements only, nothing else.
I'll second that.
Okay.
So we have the motion to amend the two point oh mills to two and a half, and second by...
Since not on the agenda.
Any questions?
She can't, she'll...
All right, questions being called for, will call vote...
I have a question. Mr. Lego?
Yes.
How much made an extra half a mill that cost the average taxpayer? We had some big...
It would be approximately fifteen dollars.
Oh.
A year.
A year.
Fifteen dollars a year divided by twelve, you're talking about well over a dollar a month, correct?
Where did that six dollar figure, is that, is that earlier?
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Better pull the boards, Scott.
I will. Here, will call vote, all in favor of the motion to amend from two to two point five mills.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Aye.
Lego, will you please pull the board? Mrs. Zizing.
Yes.
Kachasik.
No.
Dr. Koschko.
Yes.
Phil Leonard.
Yes.
Mr. Marrazo.
Yes.
Mr. Hamick.
Yes.
Mr. Petrusy.
Yes.
Mr. Stovall.
No.
Mr. Kachasik.
Six positive, two negative, the motion to amend to two point five mills is...
And a half mill, thank you, everybody. Capital improvements. Thank you. To beginning.
I will have to recalculate the numbers.
For you, you know, for the end of the last motion.
Brett, this is after the fact, because I was going to prove it anyway. I am a bit slow on the uptake on things, now, what was the six dollar figure quoted per person? Maybe I'm misunderstanding some. I mean, like I said, I was a yes anyway, so.
Five mill for capital tax, is that what you...
No, I, that could be, that very well could be.
Okay, let's continue the board.
All right, I'd like to try something different, Mr. President, if you allow me. I'd like to make one motion for two, three, four, and five, if that's okay, Christine, I believe that we had spoken about this on...
Move to...
I'd like to make a motion to approve the motions two, three, four, five as listed.
Got it.
Thank you, Mr. Manoraz.
Mr. Manoraz.
Question.
Question being called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Thank you, board. Move to assign, I'm going to six now, motion six, move to assign two million dollars of fund balance for the future retirement and or building project expenses.
Second.
Question being called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Can I just make one comment? Of that two million dollars, we discussed about using some of that money to pay for the stadium project and some other money, so we'll set it aside, but we may then need to, in the coming months, designate those dollars for those projects.
As well, that would be the...
Correct, that's one of the, one of the items we're talking about, just for the record, because that's what we talked about, using those money for this year. Sorry.
No problem. Take it, Mr. Lego. Move to approve a short-term lease purchase agreement with Apple Financial Services, amounting to one hundred four thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars, which covers the following equipment as listed.
Second. Question.
Question being called for, will call vote... Short-term leases, essentially, it's, I'm not sure the, how to explain it, but they, we need, we wanted these devices in June, because otherwise, if, if, I didn't want to wait for this board meeting, so they gave us authorization to have a short-term lease so we get billed after July 1st. So it is basically for a couple of weeks, there's no interest, there's no financing, is that how you understand it, Brett?
I understand, correct.
So it's just a formality is all it is, just so that they can bill us after July 1st for the new, I can't wait till the new budget, or this, or else we won't have them in time. Does that make sense? So it's a bridge, is what you're saying? I, yeah, it, it's... A bridge lease to get us to July, so what happens in July?
Then, then a hundred thousand dollars come through.
Basically, giving us a no interest, no cost lease for a month, for a month to get us to when our lease gets started.
And then we're going to pay the entire money off.
We'll pay it off all.
So that'll be one payment.
Any other questions regarding this?
Yeah, my technology, I'm sorry, what does that mean? Thirty-two, what is the IMAC, what is that?
The, the, A, the thirty-two IMACs, those are desktop computers, so those are going, those are going to be, thirty-two computers are going to go to our graphic arts lab upstairs for Mrs. Haberger. Those machines are about nine years old, so those will be replaced by those brand-new machines, and the iPads, there's a two hun, those are in ten packs, there's two hundred and forty iPads. Those iPads will be going to our kindergarten and our first-grade teachers. If you recall, we bought Chromebooks, about a hundred Chromebooks, last month we approved them for the, for the second grade, and the iPads, we're putting in K1, just because the little kids do a little better with the iPads because of their dexterity.
Thanks for the explanation.
Yep. It's okay.
Okay, did we have a second on...
We did, Mr. Manoraz.
Questions called for, will call vote, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the purchase of one hundred Acer Chromebooks from Questo, thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Second.
Mr. Petrucci, questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Those are the hundred Chromebooks I just mentioned. I said we approved them last month. Those are the Chromebooks for second grade, just so, just for clarification.
I'll try it again. You gotta be a little quicker, buddy.
Sorry.
This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Move to approve the purchase of twenty-seven competition starter kits for the high school STEM program from Vex Robots amounting to twenty-four thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars.
Second. Question.
Second by Mrs. Issen. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Finally, move to approve an agreement with Emerald Data Solutions for a web-based service known as Board Docs, amounting to twenty-seven hundred dollars plus the initial charge, a thousand for setup and training.
Is that the books we're getting?
Yes.
Second by Mrs. Issen.
Question.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pachassi.
You're welcome.
Buildings, ground safety, Mr..
Uh, yeah, buildings are ground. I'd like to move to authorize Core Architect to design and bid the following projects in accordance with the unlawful proposal given. High School Jim Acoustics, High School Chiller Wall Brick Fasson, and High School Chiller Pipe Insulation.
Second.
Oh, question first. That, is, is, is this a bid, does this bid cost us money to do it? Is there money involved in us getting the bid, or is that just, what's the process there?
Well, Core charges us a fee to design these projects.
What, but are they charging us a fee to do the bid itself?
No, the, the.
That's free?
The fee for the projects is whatever it is, yes.
But what if we don't decide to go with all of that?
Uh, we still have to pay them for their services, but that's a.
Have a second.
Sir. Question.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Mrs. Issen.
Yes.
Chassid.
Yes.
Dr. Koschko.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Leonard.
No.
Trucey.
Yes.
Mr. Stovall.
Yes.
One with one absolute. I just wanna add one clarification. You're paying the folks. The bid goes out?
And, and I, I, we have that cost worked up already, but my cost doesn't do it.
Brett, did we, were you looking for a budget fee as well?
Uh, they charge a standard fee as, as.
I think six and a half, six and a half. You haven't approved the project, you just approved.
I understand. I, I, I understand.
We can't, we can't do the projects without the design, so whether we do the projects or not, we determine based on the cost.
I understand.
Just clarifying.
Thank you. Thank you.
I thought, I'm not.
Thank you.
I thought it was a couple of pages scared me.
Clear, employer relations negotiations and transportation, Mrs. Issen.
Move to approve the Act Ninety-three agreement.
Second.
This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carries. Who, Mrs. Issen? Food service, Mr. Neen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the following breakfast and lunch prices for the two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty school year as listed.
Second. Second by Mr. Pachassi. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Uh, move to approve the following milk prices for the two thousand nineteen, twenty-twenty school year. There will be no increase from two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen, white and chocolate milk both at seventy cents per half pint.
By Mr. Marazo.
Question.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
That is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Neen. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Nick Petrucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the, the list of additional substitute teachers and support personnel for a month of June two thousand nineteen.
Issen, questions being called for. Roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to approve the tentative assignments of professional personnel as presented by a superintendent for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty school year. For the most part, the assignments were recommended by the principals. Final assignments will be reviewed and approved by the board prior to deadline date, August sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Second by Mrs. Issen.
Question.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to approve the following physician and dentist for Penn Trafford School District two thousand nineteen, twenty, twenty school year. Dr. Kevin Wong, the physician, salary twelve thousand dollars. Dr. Thomas Shaw, the dentist, is two fifty per student.
Second. Roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to accept and file tentative official ratings for instructional personnel for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year as determined by principals and superintendent. Final official ratings will be approved upon receipt of all state data.
Second. Second by Mr. Marazo.
Question.
Roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to extend the supplemental contracts to the following personnel for two thousand nineteen, twenty school year as recommendation superintendent salaries are determined according to a negotiated contract as listed.
Question. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to authorize administration to post-advertised interview and hire candidates for any vacancy that occurs prior to your August meeting.
Second. Question. By Mr. Neen. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to approve the following leave request. Anita Barber, Donna Lowman, Brian McDonough, as listed.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to approve the following textbook two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, which is in the textbook budget according to the textbook cycle. The title Developing Child Student Edition, rest is as listed.
Second. Second by Mr. Pachassi. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to set the following retirement resignations. Melissa Candy, Tanya Kelch, Henry Con, Henry Continenteta. As, as listed.
Second. Second by Mr. Pachassi. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move. That's Jim Kelch's wife, correct?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Yeah, she, she's a hard worker. She helped out the auction a couple of times. She volunteered. She was very dedicated.
I spoke with Mrs. Candy this afternoon. Close call, I'm ready to apologize. She couldn't have been.
Do we approve, oh, okay, I'm sorry, we approve. Move to set the following resignations. Elizabeth Aquino, Tanya Funk, Colin Pratt, Abby Stewart, as listed.
Second. Second by Mr. Pachassi. Roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to deploy the following personnel. New employees contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation, except back thirty-four, one fifty-one, one fourteen ways to call with Pennsylvania within thirty days. Ian Wolf, Custodian of Penn Shepherd High School, Tuesday through Saturday, three to eleven P.M., effective July one, two thousand nineteen, at the rate of fifteen dollars and twenty cents per hour.
Second. Second by Mr. Marazo. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Can he stand up for a, for a moment? How are you doing? Congratulations. I know you waited for all this. When did you start working for PP?
I started South Custody in twenty fifteen. Asking the districts to. Works, I work for. Pardon. Has definitely earned his job. Always positive, always happy, always trying to help anybody. On his face. I am so glad you got this job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
So now I'll see you on a regular basis when I walk.
Right.
Not just on an occasional.
That's right. I'll afford it. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
We proved it, okay. Move to approve the following student-teacher assignments. Student-teacher Shirley Gentile, the school Saint Vincent College, and the other one, the student-teacher Joshua Rice, and also the school's Saint Vincent College. Then the third one, the student-teacher Emily Testor, the school's Western Governors, Governors University, as listed.
Second. Second by Mr. Marazo.
Question.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Carries.
Move, move to approve the following intern assignments. The intern is Jacqueline Ketsfara, and the second one's intern is Megan Frew, as listed.
Second. Second by Mr. Pachassi. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
That's all, Mr. President. Sorry for a little bit of lapse here. I kept the, got, carried up a conversation. I forgot to approve the motions. I saw. Thank you for that. I apologize. Okay.
Policy Public Relations legislator in title two, Mr. Martin Stovall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept and file the minutes of the Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on Monday, May sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Okay. Second by Mr. Pachassi. Questions. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to continue the resolution adopted in June fourteenth, nineteen seventy-nine, providing for the change in the roll call procedures for matters as outlined in section five oh eight of the Public School Code of, or nineteen forty-nine during the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Copy of the resolution is filed with the June fourteenth, two thousand seventy-nine board minutes. I'd like to see a copy of that.
That's when I started.
You probably made the motion.
Second, do you have a second, Marty?
Second.
Question.
Second by Mr. Pachassi. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to continue the bond coverage for the secretary of the Board of School Directors, Mr. Brett Lago, and the Assistant Secretary of the Board of School Directors, Ms. Joan Weiner, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
That's not enough.
Never is enough.
Second.
Question.
By Mr. Pachassi. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to grant permission to the school board members, secretary, solicitor, and district administrators on a case-by-case basis to attend the annual convention of the National School Board Association, the American Association of School Administrators, or any other educational convention during the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, of education or financial advantage to the Penn Trafford School District. In addition, the superintendent may approve any conference or workshop for any staff member which is conducted in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. An itemized verified statement of expenditures will be maintained in the business office and made a part of the record following all conference or workshops.
Second. Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to authorize the administration to submit the federal program applications such as Title One, Title Two slash A, Title Four, for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Okay.
Mr. Leonard, questions being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Move to approve participation in the curriculum and non-instructional resource services department, Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Number Seven, Co-op Drug-Free Schools and Communities Active, or nineteen, six, for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Second.
Second by Mr. You have a question? This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Move to adopt Attachment A of the I, ID, IDEA BPL one oh eight dash four four six rider program narrative for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as requested by the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit described below.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrucci.
Question.
Questions being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say no.
Move to give final approval to the following board policies and administrative regulations. A copy of these policies and regulations will become an official part of the minutes of this meeting as listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrucci. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
That's all I have this evening, Mr. President.
Mr. Stovall. Taxes, insurance, taxes, Mr. Bill.
All the same. I mean, nothing report.
You, you gotta read.
Maybe I do have something to report.
You don't get off the hook that easy.
I'm a better listener than I am a reader. Where we at here?
Back in here.
H. I tried to, I tried to make it away through the media, I swear. Move to adopt the Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion Resolution effective July first, two thousand nineteen. A complete copy of the resolution will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second by Mr. Marazo.
Question.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Number two.
Number two. Number two. You guys are really working me to death here tonight. Come on. Little slack. All right, number two. Move to authorize finish of the following tax resolutions and taxes for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. A complete copy of these resolutions will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting. Hold point, section six seventy-nine per capita tax. Act five eleven, as, as noted, per capita tax, occupational residence tax, or net profit taxes, or reality transfer taxes, local services taxes.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrucci. Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And when you do number three, we just have to change. Eight point seven five to eighty-six point two five.
What about Trafford Borough? That, I won't know until I go back and. How do we do that from a record?
Has to be determined by the. Bad business manager.
Yeah. May I continue?
Yeah, you don't say fifteen point two five.
You're gonna say this number, but you're gonna say as determined by the business.
As determined by the.
Yeah. Hey, he's a, he's a good teacher. He's a pretty smart guy.
You're gonna say, you're gonna say this number here, you're gonna say this number here. And then when you get to this, say as determined by the.
I'll let you. If I get, if I get, hey, if I get stumped, you, you, you school me up here, all right? Number, number three, move that the board of school directors adopt the following resolution. Be resolved and hereby resolve, resolved by the Board of School Directors and Penn Trafford School District, theirs hereby assessed, leave, levied, and imposed for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and then in July thirtieth, twenty, twenty twenty. A tax on all real estate in the district subject to taxation at the rate of.
Eighty-six point two five.
Eighty-six point two five. For, uh, mils, for each one hundred dollars, a hundred doll, each, each one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of taxable property. Real estate tax.
For the Allegheny County portion located in Trafford Borough will be determined by the business manager.
This is what you call teamwork, folks.
Great teamwork.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrucci.
Question.
Questions being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Mr. Lego, will you please have a roll call vote? Mrs. Issen.
Yes.
Mr. Pachassi.
No.
Dr. Koschko.
Yes.
Mr. Bill Leonard. Mr. Bill Leonard.
Yes.
Still with us? Mr. Marazo.
Yes.
Mr. Neen.
Yes.
Mr. Trucey.
Yes.
Mr. Stovall.
No.
Six to two, one, motion carries.
Six to two.
Six to two, one. Six, yes, two, nine.
Recount, recount.
Will a roll call vote? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye, we already did it.
You've skipped my step here, buddy.
This thing is the last meeting in the year.
Listen to your voice. Take it.
I stumbled today too, Scott, so that's great.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.